Have I not got a camera? I have now. Good evening, everyone. Apologies for the late start, we had a long planning meeting before this. And so, welcome, and the mayor will allow, I have got actually a letter here. I believe that we will go in and allow any other questions after I've read, well, I could read the letter, but I think most of us have got the letter from Mike Cosgrove. Mike, are you in?
I am, Mr. Madam Mayor.
Would you like any part of this for doubt? Or are you happy that we've all seen it? And are there any points that you would like to bring up?
Or are the, are, is there anybody else? Are there any other members of the public with us?
Yes, there are. Yes, there are other members of the
There are other members of the
Alright, well, I'd be grateful, Madam Mayor, if you could read it out, because they might not have, I'm sure they haven't got it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Well, Faversham Town Council opposed the DUCI and the land, the local plan.
No, I didn't say.
Oh, well.
I've, can I, can I read what I said?
Yes, you can.
Does each town councillor consider that Faversham with 13% of Swales' population should support the proposed combined local plan growth for Faversham of 28%?
Right.
Quates to some 4,000 houses, 12,000 people and 3,000 cars.
Fine. And any of the other paragraphs, would you like me to read out?
I haven't got any other paragraphs there, Madam Mayor.
That is it then, right? I've got the whole letter, but that is your main concern, is it, this evening?
I, I would like a response from each of the town councillors, please.
Thank you. Are there any councillors that would like to make comment at this point?
Oh, are we going to, no, Madam Mayor? Or shall we get our questions first? What's your preference?
I think we answer this one and move on. If, if anyone has, yes.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm willing to kick us off.
Thank you.
It, it's, I can't really verify the numbers in, in the question, but I think the essence of the question is, is, is 3,500 houses to, in our, in our consideration, too many for Faversham. I think it is, yes, I've always been, always said it is, I think, I think 3,500 is too many houses for Faversham. I've been quite consistent in saying that. And it's not part of the question, but I also think 10,000 houses for, for Swale is ludicrous as well. I think planning systems ludicrous, where, where, where if you want to get a road crossing or a footpath or a school book or a classroom, you have to rely on developer contributions. I think the whole system stinks. And I wish we had a government who would change it.
Thank you. And councillor Barker, you would like to comment?
Yeah, I mean, I, as a couple of, I guess, a couple of points, really, strictly speaking, not all 3,500 houses within our parish, but the impact of Faversham is nevertheless there. I think unfortunately it understates the position, Mr. Cosgrove, in that the
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Can you hear me now? Can everyone else?
You were looking down.
Yes.
Thank you, councillor.
I'm not sure where I'm looking has an effect on a directional microphone, Mr. Cosgrove, but nevertheless, I'll carry on. And I think your statement underplays the issue somewhat as well, given that there are 1,100 houses to the west of Faversham being proposed, which will have a significant impact on the town. I'd like to echo the comments of my colleague councillor Owen. And what I find really, really shameful is that in October, when 10 Kentish MPs wrote to the Secretary of State for Housing to complain about the housing allocation targets, the representative for, for Faversham amid Kent didn't also add their name to that letter. It's shameful that, that our MP wouldn't stand up for us in, and, you know, in our position in Swale and the allocation of those houses. I think it will have a really damaging impact to Faversham, the volume of houses. And I think it's, it's, it's a terrible shame. I think that Swale Borough Council are having to react to a system that is unfair and, and really doesn't even correspond to kind of national targets for growth and investment across the country. It also, you know, you, you also fail to recognise in your question the significant damage that would have happened had Swale also considered sites like North Street, you know, the Gladman's proposal. So although your question is relatively pointed, Mr. Cosgrove, I think it misses a load of key issues, which is, you know, just unfortunate, but probably will be symptomatic of, of the Conservative Party in general, really.
Thank you. Councillor Hook, would you like to comment?
Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Cosgrove, for the question. I agree with my colleagues that, I mean, I think the number is not quite 4,000 proposing a draft plan, but it's too many. I said that, and several of us said that at the public meeting. And it's no good pretending, though, that Swale Council have sat in a room by themselves in, in splendid isolation, come up with this plan. The background is a statutory instruction from the national government. You must build these houses. And if, if Swale just refused, then a, a planning inspector would come and force it on us. Or actually, it'd be worse than that. It would be the situation where planners, where developers would be able to get planning permission wherever they wanted, because the land supply is not sufficient according to the government. And that's how we see these houses being put up at Perry Court and Brokdell Road and Love Lane and all the other sites that were approved under the previous Swale Council. I, I checked a figure, actually, just probably came on tonight. Population growth, because actually, population growth in terms of number of households is only predicted to be 7% over the next 10 years, predominantly among over 75s, which is wonderful news, really, because it means people are, are living longer. But when the population growth is 7%, it just doesn't make any sense to me that the government with responsibility for England, which is the UK government, is forcing much larger housing growth than that on, not just our area, but all over Kent and all over South East England. And if you just put into Google government housing targets, you get no end of stories from around last October, not just the, the Kent MPs that councillor Barker rightly mentioned, wrote to the government, say, please drop this, but also MPs all over England urging Secretary of State Jenrick to not impose these huge targets on councils, but still, he's going ahead. And, and the government seems to just roll over and do whatever housing developers want them to do. So this, this housing number that's being imposed by the government is wrong and must be opposed by all of us. And also, the proportion in the current draft Swale local plan is too many and we should push back against it. And it seems to me we've got this really unedifying scenario where Swale's got two members of parliament. One is, represents the west of Swale and says, stick them all over there. One represents east of Swale, says, put them all over there, just sort of dividing and conquering and setting the two communities off against each other, when there, it's really the government who's, who's causing the problem in this way. What's, what's equally important, as well as us also pushing back and through the consultation process, trying to get the number in Faversham or east Swale down to a lower number, is also, in my view, that we look at how planning is configured. Because Mr. Cosgrove in this question rightly, for example, thinks about the number of cars that they're going to be. We need to have good planning, where we don't just build houses, but we build communities. And that means that people who have a shop, a school, local services in walking distance will tend to walk, and we mustn't have the kind of suburban sprawl we see, where you can't get to anything without driving. So the quality of place making is going to be really important, I think, and something we really need to address ourselves to. And of course, this will be a fight for, for many years to come.
Thank you. Any other councillor? I can't see everyone on the screen.
Yes, my hands up, Anderson.
Thank you. Councillor Jackson?
Yes, I sat on the local plan at Swale, and I was the only Faversham councillor that went for the small amount originally, original, which was 1,000, I think, 250. That was the only person, the only councillor who voted for that. All the Conservatives didn't, Liberals didn't, and the Greens didn't. So it was either a case of going for the C, which was agreed in the end, or have the government imposed on us. I also asked the question of Mike Bardock about Gordon Henderson. And had Helen Whately, RMP, replied? And he said, no, she hadn't designed to reply to it. I actually had emailed her myself about the amount of houses, and her answer to me was really non-committalment. This was the government guideline. Yes, we don't really want more houses than we need in Faversham, blah, blah. We do need some, which we have always agreed with, but not to the amount that we are being given. So I, as one councillor, am totally against the amount that we're being given. If we had the infrastructure first, if we had the schools first, perhaps it would be a different answer. But as it stands, no, I'm sorry, I don't agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councillors? I can't
I have had my hand up for a while, councillor.
And that's councillor Martin, isn't it?
It is indeed.
Yes, thank you.
Councillor Martin and councillor Jackson, you aren't showing your videos, so nobody can see if you have your hands up. I don't know if you're aware.
I've got it now, yes.
Primarily because my video doesn't work on this laptop, councillor Barker.
We're all struggling, yes.
I'll, I'll start by stating very outright that I, I do not intend on predetermining myself with regard to the local plan. We'll have to vote on it at a later date in another place. That being said, the problem that we have is this central government target in the way that it is overly intensive on the South East. No government over the last 30 years has tried to adequately address the imbalance in the economy of this country. There are houses in Liverpool that are sold for a pound. The average house price for a three-bed home in Blackpool is around £160,000. The average down here is £460,000. There are grave disparities in the housing market and the economy between north and south in this country, and they need to be addressed if there is to be any change in where those housing allocations are put. People cannot live in communities where there is no work. The changes to the local plan address the comments made, or in the draft local plan, address the comments made by the planning inspector when Bearing Fruits was originally adopted. Do I think 3,500 is too many for Faversham? Yeah, I do. Do I think that 10,000 is too many for Swale? Yes, I do. But by the same token, I think statistics can be used to argue in any way.
I think we've lost councillor Martin.
Hello? There we go. I, I thought I froze there. So as I was saying, there are lies, damn lies, and statistics. We can assume that all these houses will be people incoming to the town. But what we've seen in the developments that are already going up down Faversham is that the majority of those moving into the homes are people moving out of the town centre area, or those who are moving from their parents' house into their first homes. Just because new housing is coming doesn't necessarily mean the population increases. It does also mean that there will be a decrease in the number of overcrowded homes within the town. And we have to take that into account. We do need to take into account as well that the younger population, the younger generations in this town need somewhere to live. Are we going to say to our young people that actually, no, we don't want you in Faversham when you go and get your career? We want you to move out of the area, because we want to make sure that it stays as it is. No, no local plan will ever be perfect, and the pursuit of perfection is the enemy of the good. We have to go for what is the best possible outcome. We have to make sure that what is in these plans represents what people need. It brings us the schools, it brings us the infrastructure, it improves the area for people, and it ensures that everybody has an opportunity to actually stay in the area where they want to stay. We have, we want to keep our local people here in Faversham. Realistically, you know, do we want to be in a position where people like myself have to move away from the area? Or do we want to be in a position where we can stay, where we can afford to be here, where we can afford to work here, where we can afford to contribute to the community here? It's a very emotive subject, and nobody wants additional housing on their doorstep until we start thinking about, do I want my kids to be able to come and visit me by walking? Or do I want them to have to drive 100 miles to get here? It's a very tricky issue, and it's one where you have to balance out. And as I say, the, the draft local plan is, has been developed based on those comments from the previous, from the planning inspector, based on the previous local plan, which did state that there was too much reliance on development in the west of the borough. We have to take that into account, and we have to be very careful. And we just have to make sure that we are realistic and that we do the very best we can. The other issue has, as has been alluded to by my colleagues, if there isn't a local plan adopted, you can find yourself at the mercy of developers. You can find yourself at the mercy of government, saying, actually, no, the local authority aren't going to have control of planning anymore. It's going to be decided by planning inspectors in Bristol. Well, I'd far rather the planning decisions were made in Sittingbourne regarding Faversham than made in Bristol by bureaucrats.
Thank you, councillor Martin. Councillor Trevor Martin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I echo my colleagues' regret that such a large number comes this way. However, I'm also very conscious that the boundary of the town has already changed. The, we resisted for some 50-odd years building south of the A2. That went when Brokdell Road and Perry Court were given planning permission. That then opens up from the A2 to the M2 as an area for housing, which this council's predecessor council actually predicted in, in the year I was born. So we've done pretty well to resist for 58 years. However, I do think that numbers are too great. I too, I'm also conscious of the complaints about the lack of infrastructure currently available. The proposals that have been made in the local plan, as I read it, actually help redress that balance. So whilst I don't agree with 4,500 homes being added to the area, I also can, also know that we need another primary school urgently. Our secondary schools need to expand, and we possibly need another one. And to my mind, if this provides a sensible, well-thought-out set of proposals for the area, then so be it. Much as I don't like it, as others have said, this is a, a national government target. If we don't, as a area, get it right, and if we don't, as a town with our neighbourhood plan, get it right, then we will see detrimental development. Hopefully, with what we have planned, with the neighbourhood plan and with the local plan, the addition of better quality life in the area will be achievable. And I, for one, am, am comfortable that the trade-off is actually worth it in the end. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Martin. Councillor Thomas?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'd just like to say, I certainly do concur with my fellow councillors. And I do strongly condemn central government's housing targets that they've put across the country. And I see other areas where they've tried or appealed, not so much of appeal, but spoken up against government targets. But as councillor Martin had just said, if we don't, or the borough council doesn't meet the government housing targets, planning control will be removed from our authority and passed to the planning inspector. And I'm not prepared to do that, because I want the environmental policies put in place for house builders across our borough, because house building will happen if central government has anything to do with it. The other thing I find particularly frustrating, as I know all the residents do, is the fact that at the moment, the way government planning policy is, that infrastructure follows development. And I strongly believe that infrastructure should precede the developments, not the other way around. So that's something I definitely would like to have changed. I'd also like to highlight at this meeting that the Sittingbourne and Sheppes Labour Party most certainly do strongly support this plan and support the local plan's proposal to have these houses built in Faversham. Thank you.
Thank you. I think possibly that we need to conclude that for this evening. And I hope, Mike, that you can see that all our councillors really just want the best that is possible for Faversham.
Madam Mayor, sorry, councillor Saunders has had his hand up for quiet.
Oh, sorry, councillor Saunders.
We, we also have another public question as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I won't speak for very long, because obviously, lots of comments have been made already, a lot of which I would agree with. But I just did want to say two things. One is that everyone said they're opposed to the government targets. But I think one thing to emphasise is, the reason these government targets are so high is that public policy at the moment is to rely on the market to try and tackle housing need. And it's a remarkably inefficient way to tackle the crisis of people being stuck in rented accommodation. Proper investment in proper social housing would be a far more efficient way to start to tackle housing need. And this government, and indeed, previous governments, have chronically failed to, to build social housing. And if we're really going to solve the housing crisis, we must get back to, to building social housing. The other thing I was just going to emphasise, that in assessing the merits of development within Swale or bits of Swale, yes, there's the issue of numbers. But there's also, as other councillors have said, there's the issue of effectively planned development supported by infrastructure, housing, a development that reaches environmental standards, that provides a good level of affordable housing. So in thinking about development and whether it's good or bad for the town, we need to look at things in the round, and not just focus on numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. No other comments on Mr. Cosgrove's letter? I just hope that you believe that your councillors are definitely united and wanting to see the best for Faversham. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's very kind of you to let me speak, and it's very kind of all the councillors to give me the benefit of their wisdom. Thank you and good day.
Thank you very much. And thank you. We do have one other question.
Yes, from Mr. Chris Oswald Jones, who would like to ask a question.
Thank you.
Thank you, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, very well.
Very much. Apologies for lack of video, technical problem. So, in the club, maybe, for benefit of any other public listening, Chris Oswald Jones, resident elector, Faversham.
Thank you.
I guess the town, your town clerk can probably answer quickly. I'm reading down the agenda items. I cannot find on the website minutes for items six, seven, eight and nine. I guess they'll be tabled.
Yes, I think.
Climate, environment, diversity, policy, finance, public spaces, neighbourhood plan steering room.
I had put them all on the website the other day, so I know that there seems to be an issue with the website at the moment.
We could check that, and if they're not on, perhaps
Yes, they're not on, I will put them on tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. No other questions, so can we move on to the agenda? Apologies? Any apologies?
No apologies received.
Thank you. Declarations of pecuniary and non-pecuniary interest? Any councillors? Again, that's a no, thank you. Or at least hands that I can see, so no. Previous minutes and matters to report? Is everyone happy with the minutes? Any comments? Councillor Thomas?
I was just going to say, I, I'm happy to either propose or second that we accept the minutes.
Thank you. And he said, we'll take it, you, you propose, councillor Thomas. Any comments? Or have we a second? Councillor Williams?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Could we all vote to accept the minutes? Thank you. All right, it's my moment here. Some optimism, let's just brighten things a little. There have been all the statutory meetings over the last month, and actually, there's been far more meetings. We seem to have lots of topics like youth, neighbourhood plans, 20s plenty, climate. We've, we've got lots of topics going at the moment, and it's all looking positive. And just to let you know, I had a letter from an eight-year-old, I'm sure some of you will have seen that. He accompanied his parents on a litter pick and was really quite upset to find broken glass, things that would injure the animals, and he wondered what we could all do about this. And could we, could we find those that are fly-tipping at the moment? Anyway, it was a lovely letter, and I did go and deliver a response to him and told him, if our young people of his age are actually finding litter not a nice thing, there is hope for the future. And I do think it is the way to go into the schools and tell these young children, because I don't know about everyone else, but when my daughters came out of school, if their teacher had told them something, it didn't matter what I said, the teacher was always right. So I'd like to see us go into schools and actually promote that a little more. And, but well done him. Right, the next event was Andrew Osborne's 90th birthday. They are past mayor and freeman. He looked incredibly smart for 90, very with it. And, and actually, he got the best birthday present, I think, because he had his second vaccination on his birthday. So that was great for him. Then, a week ago Saturday, I went to our recreation ground, which is just such a brilliant space. Hat Hat were there, and it was their official opening. And I have to say, we need to really support them. Their ethos is so good. 25% of their profits will go to local good causes. They say they will, and I think they will, do a litter pick once a year. And they would have had an Easter egg sort of hunt trail, as it were. But obviously, they didn't want to have people congregating this year, but they will do that another year. So I really feel a lot of enthusiasm for them, and we need to support them. Oh, and then on Friday, hurling hands, the butcher. We have new people in what was Baldy Butchers, Two Young Business, and Chapsin gone into partnership. So I would encourage everyone to support them, and of course, all our local businesses. As we reopen, they all need really good summers to help them get through this winter. So definitely supporting local businesses. Saturday was our first lottery draw. Sadly, I didn't win. But there were, I think, some 18, three free tickets, one awarded, and two Fitbits for one. And that definitely was something I would like to have won. And so that was a good start, but we must keep encouraging people to enter in. And then, well, I don't know about you, but I have been amazed around the town, through the churchyard, around all the corners. The amount of bulbs, our town has looked so bright and lifted everybody. And we really must thank all our volunteers. They have done an amazing job this year. It's really given us all a lift and a boost. And then on Saturday, there was there was an Easter egg trail which Emily Cook and her team put in place. And I was in town and I can tell you, it was so popular. It really was well worth their while and they raised £300, over £300 actually, not sure of the final total, for street children's education in India. So I thanked Emily very much. I thought it was absolutely brilliant. And let's have one up. And all I really want to say, again, what a fantastic Faversham community we have. And I thank all those that have contributed in so many ways over this two years of me being mayor. It's been brilliant. Thank you. Back to the agenda, sorry. Mayors. Right, report from the Kent Police. I've got that. I'm hoping you've all got a copy. And they all, they obviously are busy. They've listed all the incidents they've been called to. Does anyone have any comments on that report? Councillor Thomas?
Councillor Perkin was just before me, Madam Mayor.
Oh, sorry councillor Perkin first.
Just asking the town clerk if they could remove Alex from the meeting, please, because he's sending me very inappropriate messages. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that councillor Perkin, I wasn't aware. Sorry.
Right, and councillor Thomas?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just going to ask if we can invite P C S O Sarah, can't remember her surname now.
Jones, is it?
Yes, invite her to a future town council at an appropriate moment. That would be great. Thank you.
I have actually bumped into her once or twice in town. They're definitely more visual now, we can see them in the town. But any other comments on the, it's good to have this monthly update, I have to say. It does let us know where things are happening and very good.
I think it's terrific to have this update. We've not had something like this, I think, before. And I think if we get one every month or something practical like that, it would be great actually to see to see the patterns actually, to see where things are happening actually, and how the community can work with the police and what people need to be looking out for. Really useful.
Very useful. Thank you. No other comments on that then?
I think, Madam Mayor, you've got myself and councillor Williams.
Yes, I have. I can see councillor Williams.
Councillor Martin had his hand up before me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I very much welcome this report and very much like my colleagues. I think it is worth pointing out as well, as has been stated at the bottom of the report from Kent Police around the legislation regarding e-scooters, which can be a bit of a nuisance at times. I don't mind admitting, I've had a one weaving in front of me many times whilst driving around at the 20 miles an hour, as we should be at town. Particularly cutting across the Ashford Road A2 and into the Mall Junction without even looking. It's worth pointing out that privately owned e-scooters cannot be ridden on public highways or on pavement. Only those that are rented from a company can currently be ridden on the public road network. This is because you can't get insurance for any ever privately owned e-scooter and e-scooters are covered by the Road Traffic Act. So it is worth pointing that out. If anyone's looking at buying an e-scooter, you can only use it on private land at the moment. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that information, councillor Martin and councillor Williams.
Thank you. Yeah, I concur with my colleagues. And I have to admit, I find Sarah Jones really, really helpful if I do need to raise anything. One thing I wanted to mention, I don't know if it's relevant, but just whether we could ask for a future report or information is that, is just the current sort of information about the the use of Faversham Police Station in the sense of, I know that the Royal Task Force are using it. And part of the reason is because I've had some cases related to to the increasing in kind of activity there. And I just think it would be useful for the town, for us as councillors to understand what the police are using the police station for and the kind of movements of it roughly in the sense of, you know, because residents obviously ask questions and but I wonder if we could just go back to P C S O Sarah Jones and just ask if she perhaps in her next report just kind of give us a little bit of information about how the police station is being used.
Thank you, councillor Williams. I will say I walk that way often and there's definitely been more activity, sometimes one vehicle after another. There's definitely a lot more activity than there ever was. So it would be good to have that information. And councillor Owen?
So, Madam Mayor, just before I say anything, I really do, I think it's great that we have this report. It's extremely useful. I'm very much appreciate it. Just one point on it that I'd like to raise. Anti-social behaviour and other incidents in a cross lane, youth aged roughly 15 years old congregating by the swimming pool and car park. I just think we've got to be careful to understand what antisocial behaviour is versus young people congregating. It's a minor point, but I think sometimes there is a degree of humanisation of groups of young people hanging out. And I think we've got to be careful that we don't turn into such a group of people.
I quite agree. That's well said. Thank you. Any other comments? I think we all agree with that. Thank you. So now we can go on to climate and biodiversity. Councillor Williams, would you like to report?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll just I'll just bring up a few points from the last meeting. There's nothing, no recommendations. But before I propose to accept the minutes, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. Obviously, now that restrictions are slightly easier, we're able to start to think about wrestling with some of the projects that the committee wanted to achieve. The main one, main project is the two bus shelters with living green roofs on them. That's progressing, albeit a little bit slower. However, it's important to get it right when we do this. So we're just finding out a few more details to hopefully see these implemented later in the year, which is great. And those locations are Stone Street and the Mall at the moment, locations we're looking at. The youth climate panel was a proposal to try and engage young people in a debate around the climate emergency. And part of the reason is that within the original climate emergency declaration, we agreed to work with young people, but equally, you know, the voices of young people have been very apparent during the recent years with regards to climate marches, et cetera. And I do think it's important to get a diverse range of young people involved. So that has been resolved to form the panel and that's in process of going through. And we've got support of both the secondary schools and indeed other projects in the town. So it's a case of watch this space, but I hope that it will be launched later this month. Within, with regards to community gardening, the idea around the Keep Faversham Buzzing initiative, which is to sort of an overarching kind of project around community gardening. It's there to support the existing volunteer and community gardens in the town to give them support where it's needed, but also to create other opportunities for people and increase biodiversity gain in the town. We are doing a project of a sea giveaway on Earth Day, which is the, I think the 22nd of April from, if I'm correct, where we're giving away seeds, very much like the tree giveaway we did in the winter. So again, that information will be coming out shortly regarding that. We mentioned about ethical banking. This was really to fall in line with policy and finance debate around town council, looking at alternatives to bank money that would can be with institutions that don't support fossil fuels and unethical activities. This was just a report to endorse that debate. Other than that, really, we just talked about events. As I said, Earth Day, which is coming up, and also for World Environment Day, which is in June. And hopefully, we will be able to do a little bit more in the terms of a physical event for that. But obviously, very much more based around the virtual side this year, so. That is it really. And so I'd like to propose, well, obviously, if people've got any questions first of all, but my proposal is we accept the minutes otherwise.
Councillor Thomas, thank you. Thank you.
I just wanted to come in on minute 111 and just ask for a rephrasing of that bit. My suggestion was for the local residents of a community, where there's a community area, to be canvassed on whether they'd be interested in volunteering to look after that plot of land. So it's just really to make sure the gist of my suggestion comes out in that minute. It was basically, we're looking for volunteers.
Volunteers, right. You can add that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? No. Well, I'm happy to propose we accept those. Have we got a seconder?
Well, yeah. Madam Mayor, I think councillor Williams had already proposed, so I think.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, if you're happy to second that, that would be great, thank you.
No wonder everyone looked quite phased about that. Thank you. We all, yeah, we all, thank you. Agreed. Thank you. So now we go on to policy and finance. Councillor Barker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And there are four recommendations to work through as a result of the last meeting. But before we, as in turn, I thought I'd just offer a few words on other matters that we talked through. Firstly, for those councillors that aren't on policy and finance, it is worth checking from time to time the work in progress report, which gets reviewed. The Policy and Finance Committee, which really, I guess, looks at all of our ambitions that we drew up at the beginning of our tenure and seeks to kind of provide some kind of progress report against them. And it's a really helpful reminder of all the work we have done, as well as all the work we are doing. And it's a good place to see it all in one go. Clearly, you know, some work has been put on the back burner due to kind of Covid and the constraints that's provided. But nevertheless, it still shows a kind of huge body of work, which is great to see. The policy review, so as usual, our policies have within them a general term, which says that after a period of time, they'll be reviewed. And consequently, a number of policies were refreshed and reviewed and agreed. And that was broadly any items I really wanted to talk through other than the recommendations. So I will assume that all of the councillors have the policy and finance minutes and are therefore able to see and view appendix A and B, which represent the first two recommendations to be discussed or agreed. The first being the annual plan, which is our action plan as a council between 21 and 22 next civic year. Just to kind of call out a few elements of it, there were, it was a healthy discussion around it in its entirety. But to call out a few elements and in no particular order, active transport and road safety, whilst in the past it had clearly focused around the 20s plenty working group and its ambitions. It's been broadened now to encompass a local cycling and walker infrastructure plan that we are looking to generate as a community and include the work that's being done, or our support rather, of work being done to generate a solar cycleway in the Graveney Cleefell Solar Park area, which is well worthy, I think, of our, I think we've all praised the work that's being done there and vocally supported it. So I think it's good that we embody that in our action plan. In terms of housing, we agreed that we would reshape our ambition around homelessness and dealing with homelessness and really talk to us as a council, encouraging truly affordable housing, either through the local plan or the neighbour plan. And clearly, we've now included the present amendment of a plan for referendum, which will hopefully happen within the next civic year. Other elements did change. There were some minor changes throughout. I'm hoping that everyone has read it. It was a good debate and largely agreed by all members of the policy and finance. I'm happy to propose that we accept that recommendation. Happy to take comments or questions. Unless anyone would like to second.
Any comment? It seems everyone's, oh councillor Martin?
I'm happy to second the proposal then.
Thank you. Can we all vote on that?
Agreed.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
If we can log me as an abstention on that item. Unfortunately, my signal dropped out while councillor Barker was reading through, so I'm a bit, as much as I would have supported it, I feel it's.
Yes.
Yeah, wasn't in the room, so I need to declare that. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you. And we've got public spaces, our next item.
Madam Mayor, we've got three other recommendations in the policy.
Oh, you're right. You're right. That was just the one. Thank you. I'm moving on to the future.
Agree as well. So the second item is agreeing the calendar of meetings for the next calendar year. Is there councillor Thomas, I think?
Councillor Thomas, yes.
Thank you councillor Barker. I just wanted to ask through the town clerk, is it possible to add the Elsie Whip Working Group to the working group section of the schedule of meetings? Thank you.
Yes, I can do that. No problem.
Thank you.
That amendment, which I'm happy to accept, I'm happy to propose that we accept that calendar.
Second that. Thank you. Are we all ready to vote on that? Thank you.
Agreed.
Thank you. And your next item councillor Barker?
Sorry, Madam Mayor. The next item is two for the price of one, really. There was some excellent work undertaken by Madam Mayor and councillor Trevor Martin on, and indeed the town clerk, I should say, on working with the Faversham Society and looking at the visitor information centre and a proposal who housed the visitor information centre in 12 Marketplace. And it's a relatively detailed, but yet, you know, considering the brief period of time it had to be conducted. And the recommendation was to agree a 14 year lease with the Faversham Society to house visitor information centre in 12 Marketplace. And also recommended that a peppercorn rent be charged to Faversham Society and that they be responsible for the business rates. Any questions or thoughts on that or challenges or concerns?
Yes, I would second that. Thank you. Could we all vote on that? Oh, councillor Saunders, you wanted to come in, did you, before we vote?
Well, just very briefly, because I think it's a significant decision for the town council. I, yeah, I supported it in the policy and finance meeting and I am to support it now. I mean, I did have some reservation, well, probably still do have some reservations about the usage of 12 the marketplace. But I think where we are at the moment, getting the tourist information centre into the front there will be good for the tourist information centre and it would be good for the usage of the front bit. the usage of, uh, the front bit of, uh, twelve the marketplace. And I think for anyone who's got concerns, it does, uh, leave, uh, a lot, a significant amount of space for uh, community events and exhibitions, so I think it does protect the, uh, the concept of it being a community space, not just a heritage space. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'd like to say they are only taking one third, the other space will be used for other community events and they're not taking over the whole of number twelve, just to make it clear, they have just that section and the rest can be used um, for all the, um, exhibitions and things that we've had in the past, so be double use. Um, any other comments? No, so we're happy to, councillor Barker, you proposed, thank you, I would second that. Um, can we all vote on accepting that proposal?
Agreed.
Thank you.
And the last, not least, madam mayor, I need to.
Last one, yes.
Propose we accept the minutes, uh, other than the fact, actually, the minutes, um, sorry, town clerk, and thank you for preparing the minutes, um, they've, they've got the date of the eighteenth of February on them, if that could be uh, updated to the twenty second of March.
Oh, it has, well spotted.
If we could, I propose we accept those minutes if they're amended.
Thank you, I would second, can we all vote on that to propose those? Yes, thank you. And we move on to item eight, public spaces, councillor Thomas.
Uh, thank, thank you, uh, madam mayor. Um, before I propose that we accept these minutes, I just wanted to highlight a couple of the minutes, uh, for the benefit of the town council. Um, first one being minute one hundred and three, the sixtieth anniversary of the twinning with Hayesbrook. Um, it was resolved at the meeting that the facilities manager is going to seek quotes for the updating of the town entry signs in recognition of the sixtieth anniversary. Um, so we're looking, we, we requested, um, costs at the, at the moment. Um, the plan is to not make any major changes to the signs, simply to make sure they're all in a clean and presentable state and potentially, uh, touch up any of the paintwork. But looking at the sign at the top that says twinned with Hayesbrook, or we were thinking of trying to change the wording to twinned with Hayesbrook since, and that'd be whatever the start date was, uh, just so you have an idea of what the thoughts were um, with regard to that. The other one was, uh, minute one hundred and four, the proposal for the commemorative bench. Um, we very much welcomed the town clerk's proposal, um, and the, uh, the mayor's agreement to purchase a commemorative NHS bench, which I think will look really great opposite, um, the, um, health centre. Um, once the facilities manager has spoken to the owners of the land. Um, and also will be looking to raise the canopy of the trees there so that, um, it provides a nicer, uh, more pleasant, um, seating area, um, to, to, to sit. Um, so other than that, I would like to propose that we accept the minutes of the public spaces, uh, committee, thank you.
I'm happy to second that.
Thank you, madam.
Can we all, can we all vote on that? No, thank you, thank you.
Agreed. Can I, can I just, sorry, can I?
Okay, yes.
Cam, cam, my, this is really petty, can we get rid of the S on the end of my surname, please, in the apologies?
Is it on there?
It's a really constructive comment.
We're all right with that? Thank you, I think we could do that. Lovely, what I hope is the space that the bench is going in, in that corner, it's going to be a much nicer space and I'm wondering if the sort of younger teenagers, when they come out of school, instead of congregating on the children's play area at the swimming pool, they might sit on the benches and there's going to be the other bench. And it's quite a nice, if we tidy it all up, make it pleasant, they may sit there rather than on the equipment at the swimming pool, but I don't know, that will happen, but we will see. Thank you, did we all vote on that? We did, didn't we? Thank you. So we're on to Faversham neighbourhood plan, councillor Irwin.
Thank you, madam mayor, um, so just very, very brief overview of what was discussed on Monday, the fifteenth of March. Um, Geoff Wood kindly chaired the meeting, uh, did a, did a super job. Um, just, just a couple of things, one, one of the things we discussed obviously was the local plan, public meeting, which was, was this meeting was always in advance of that. Um, and I understand that, that we'll be formulating a response following our own extraordinary meeting and the public meeting. Um, update on the call for sites, uh, the call for sites, it's, it's a bit, probably a bit, bit silly to call it a call for sites, now actually it's progressed significantly. We, we will be moving into, into the stage of site allocation over the next few weeks, so essentially, just, just as a reminder, we had, um, nearly twenty sites came forward, nineteen sites came forward in our call for sites. Um, we've been working with ACOM, who have been providing professional support, looking at the viability, uh, achievability of those sites, i.e. are they develop, developable? The next stage is site selection, uh, we've developed draft site selection criteria that'll be going out for public consultation probably in the next seven days. And we will then apply those criteria to the sites which are considered, um, suitable for development and essentially identify those which should be allocated for development within the neighbourhood plan. So we hope to, to conclude that process over the next, uh, six to eight weeks. The other, uh, significant element is local green space designation. Again, just as a reminder, we have an opportunity to designate local green spaces within the neighbourhood plan. In addition to those new ones that have come forward in the local plan, there is currently a call for, for LGS nominations out with the public, it closes next Monday, the twelfth of April. Um, so we, we have a relatively modest number of people dialing in this evening, but, but please do encourage anyone to, to nominate sites, uh, all are welcome. In terms of site selection criteria, they are set, uh, by government as opposed to criteria we can set ourselves. So again, over the next six to eight weeks, uh, we'll apply those criteria with a view to identifying sites to go into the local plan for designation, so they were probably the two most significant elements. We also had a policy workshop, um, on the twenty seventh of March, uh, where we reviewed first draft of the policies, uh, for, for the neighbourhood plan. Um, and essentially, we're updating that first draft following that meeting, so that's going to be a work in progress, which, which will take several um, iterations. Clearly, when they're in a reasonably advanced state, uh, they'll be shared with the council at large, um, for your consideration, but, but they're still relatively early in terms of development. I don't know if anyone else from the steering group has anything to add? Nope, in that case, uh, can I recommend that we accept the minutes?
I would second that. Thank you, and if we all vote?
Agreed.
Thank you. And, and thank you, there's a lot of work going in to that at the moment, a lot of our work, thank you very much. And now we've got the youth working group, I don't know whether councillor Irwin or whether you'd like me just to update.
I, I'm happy to kick us off, madam mayor, and then you.
Hey, I know, I'll come in, yeah.
Please feel free to come in, um, I think re- really, you know, we, we discussed a number of, of items, one of them being the Faversham, uh, youth climate panel that councillor Williams, um, mentioned earlier, something, something the youth working group very much welcome. Um, perhaps the, the most significant, two, two elements, um, the most significant one being the emerging plan for a youth summer fun day. Um, Brooke, uh, Williams has been doing a lot of work on that, so thank, thank Brooke very much for her work today. The idea is to run at least one, if not two or three fun days over the summer holidays. And the idea is that this will bring together a number of voluntary organisations who already work with youth in the town, uh, to, to provide some activities, uh, for, for the day, so it's, I think it's a really, really positive initiative. Um, I think everyone in the working group would be the first to admit that this year has been a very difficult year for young people, also a very difficult year for the group in terms of making things happen for young people, so I think that's, that's a very positive initiative and, and we will continue to update you on that. And the second significant item is working with our partners, uh, in the community. We've been working with, uh, Dan Cochrane, who, who you all know. He, he, um, pulled together two meetings, uh, over the last month with, with a variety of youth providers in town. And we are trying our best to, to, to form a coordinating role with those youth providers. So I think, you know, it has been a very frustrating year, but I think we're starting to make traction in terms of, of identifying a, a good firm work programme, uh, for next year. Um, and madam mayor, I don't know if you wish to add?
I think you've pretty much covered it, I mean, we are hoping again for the youth cafe, again, possibly at number twelve. Um, it, from October, we'd like to try that again with maybe partnership with Dan Cochrane coming in as well. Um, and I think, as you say, Brooke Williams is trying now to collate West Faversham's activities, um, Paul Creed's outdoor activities and what Dan's doing. And we're just wanting to get a full picture of what there is out there for our young people. Um, you know, it was really sad that their, um, silent disco and Mike Knight were all cancelled and they deserve to have some fun this summer, so if we can get these days together with a portable skate park is what I'd like to see them have as part of that. Um, so that's what we're working on, and yeah. Councillor Thomas.
Uh, thank you, madam mayor, I'd just like to say, I, I welcome the, uh, the work of the, uh, the youth working group and I'm really looking forward to, uh, seeing these events come into fruition next year and I definitely appreciate it, it's been a very frustrating year for everyone.
Yeah.
I look forward to that, um, I'm gonna, uh, have to plead that I'm a little bit dumb here, but I've, I can't remember what GEMS stands for.
Going the extra mile.
Right, thank you, madam mayor.
I didn't know to start with, I have to say, I've had to learn that, going the extra mile. To be honest, so many have done that this year, so many in our community, it's almost impossible to pick out, you know, but, um, that's, that's an initiative Dan brought with him from Nottingham. So we'd like to see how that works once he gets back into schools and things really get going. So, no, are we happy to accept the minutes? Um, I definitely am, and.
Second that.
Thank you, and can we all vote on that? Thank you.
Agreed. Agreed.
Yeah, I think our young people really deserve something, they've done very well. Right, now we have, um, the heritage working group, councillor Martin.
Um, madam mayor, um, just a couple of points, as most of them have come through, um, uh, already through other meetings from this one, um, we, to talk to yourself on the committee, um, to, and the only recommendation that we had is that the town clerk have dedicated authority to manage the visitor information centre move, twelve part marketplace, the sum of six thousand seven hundred and thirty-three pounds to be used for the project, because that wasn't, um, designated for some of the, uh, working twelve marketplace in. And, and that would then allow us to do things like move fire sensors and, um, adding some extra security measures and maybe needed. Um, it's mainly moving things around so that, um, when people are downstairs, um, they don't automatically, uh, run into our staff if they're working in the office. Um, thank you.
Thank you, and, and, um, also the town clerk's been very, working very hard on pulling together things for the display room, the Magna Carta, so that's creeping along, I think, and, uh, we hope to see that possibly by the end of the year or early next year. We have. That's the heritage, thank you, and.
Can we, can we vote on the recommendation to wire that money, please?
Oh, just on the money situation, yes, I will second that, thank you. Can we all vote that we delegate that to the town clerk? Thank you.
Agreed. Agreed.
Thank you, and could we, um, I second the minutes and could we all vote on the minutes? Thank you. Right, uh, here I think the town clerk will come in, face to face meetings, oh my.
Uh, yes, I think, hopefully you've all read my report.
Yes.
Um, and as it stands at the moment, the, there hasn't been any legislation to allow us, um, to continue to meet virtually. So from the seventh of May, we've got to meet face to face and it's just looking at different ways how we can mitigate any, any more risks than necessary. Um, so you'll see my recommendations and it's, it's really up to you to decide, um, what you'd like to do.
Ooh, I throw that open, councillor Thomas.
Uh, it's just a question to the town clerk, I was trying to understand with regard to committees. I note the suggestion that they could, could meet in the Guild Hall. Is it definitely a requirement that they have to meet face to face, or is it just the full council?
Uh, well, the, the difference is, um, between committees and subcommittees. And if you read subcommittees as in working groups, uh, and one of the, um, legal notes that I attached, it shows that there's a slight difference, that with subcommittees, members of the public do not have a statutory right to attend. Therefore, my, my reading of that and several of my colleagues is that, um, if you can hold a subcommittee in private, then you can hold it virtually. And by that means, if we decide that we want to hold it virtually but still invite members of the public, then there is no legislation that says we can't do that. Rather than looking at legislation that says we can, there's nothing to say that we can't.
That's probably better.
That makes, makes sense. Um, so, um, my only thought is looking at our committees at the moment and e- even if we just say either for the next six months or the next twelve months, we cut down on our committees or we just work differently, um, just to mitigate it. But, um, we've done some work and in the Guild Hall, uh, we can sit there, be in the Guild Hall with committees at one metre apart. It's harder at two metres apart, but it's certainly doable at one metre apart. So, yeah, it's, it's up to, it's up to you all, really.
Councillor Perkin?
Yes, was it councillor Perkin? Yes, sorry.
Uh, thank you, um, I just really wanted to kind of express my disappointment in the fact that with, with this is being rushed through for local government. Um, parliament aren't going back yet, so it seems a bit outrageous really to put local councillors and local council officers at risk unnecessarily. Um, I think that, that, you know, my children are at school, which, that has a huge amount of, uh, possibility for, you know, cross contamination there and then for me to be going into areas where other people haven't been vaccinated, I'm not going to be vaccinated myself. Um, I just think it's outrageous, if I'm honest, I, I also think that the, um, the accessibility of virtual meetings is not accessible for everybody. Um, but for, definitely for public engagement, there has been probably more people attend, um, subgroup meetings. Um, and as much as I, you know, I love a face to face meeting, I love to be able to speak to people face to face, but it has been advantageous in terms of, um, my ability to access, um, meetings from home. So, um, I don't envy anyone really having to kind of make this decision, because I think actually as, as much as we can mitigate it, I don't feel like it's completely a hundred percent safe, and which is a difficult, a difficult thing to, uh, negotiate, isn't it?
Certainly is, councillor Williams, thank you.
Thank you, I, I agree with what councillor Perkin was saying, um, in that, you know, it's providing, it's, it's putting us in a position to make decisions, um, when we may not be in a position, in a position to do it correctly. in a position to do it correctly. Because, you know, fair enough, if, if it's a council that has a, a large area that can spread out more, more easily, but obviously we're limited with the space of buildings. And, and also, you know, I, I mean, I, I don't know about everyone else, but, you know, there's probably been many more meetings I've been able to attend, because I can come into them a bit quicker. I'm not saying that, that virtual meetings should be there forever anyway, but, but it means that, you know, those meetings where you've got to then travel into them, you, you can at least attend, so you're making a contribution. I mean, perhaps an obvious thing to do, if we've got a situation like this to decide upon, is that, you know, hybrid type meetings as well, as in, you know, where we have to have physical meetings for those that can't attend, that can attend virtually in some capacity, would, would be beneficial to those that, you know, you know, got childcare issues, or, you know, physically can't make a meeting, but wants to be able to be there. To say either or, I think is, is slightly, is not particularly helpful. So, yeah, I, I think I'm like-minded. I really don't know, you know, what, what the right thing to do is. And I'm not particularly happy or comfortable with the situation.
Councillor Barker. Oh, I was going to say councillor Barker would like to come in, I think.
Could I, could I just respond to councillor Williams before we move on? Because at the moment, hybrid meetings are not an option. That's technically not legal included. So I agree with what you're saying, but that isn't an option at the moment.
Right. Councillor Barker's coming in, I think.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I find it odd that, that when so many people in other walks of lives and professions are genuinely turning towards the benefit of kind of homeworking, you know, institutions like Nationwide Bank, WEC, to, you know, to a whole range of different companies that have recognised the benefits of remote working on genuine sort of standards of work-life balance as much as anything else. And, you know, we are a committee made up entirely of people who give their time freely. And although it, you know, kind of a year, a year and a half after being voted in, that, you know, we, we moved to kind of this kind of COVID state of, of virtual meetings, it was genuinely difficult for me, having to get up at, you know, half five, five o'clock in the morning to make it into London, so I could make it back in time for a meeting at seven o'clock. And it's radically changed my ability to be able to support the council and its work, how much time I can dedicate to it. And as a professional person that wants to genuinely try and contribute to civic life, I find the kind of, I just think it's a retrograde step to move backwards. That, that being said, you know, genuinely, I think there is a, a place for both physical face-to-face meetings, as, as there is in professional life. You can't substitute a whiteboard conversation when you're dealing with kind of solutions architecture. You can't substitute seeing somebody's expression on their face close up as they submit a question from the public. There is genuine value in that social interaction and engagement. And I wouldn't for one minute suggest that we, you know, we try and maintain everything we currently do, because I think there's genuine value, value in a personal engagement. I think for the, for the short term, it feels to me, we have to do the legal minimum to ensure that, you know, we don't face or are subjected to legal challenges down the track, which is what the advice seems to suggest is possible, however remote. And that collectively, we work towards balancing, I think, a number of face-to-face meetings with virtual meetings that can be just as inclusive. And I think it needs a lot of thought. I don't think, you know, this conversation in 10, 15 minutes is really going to do that justice. I think we need to think about it on a committee-by-committee basis. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Councillor Martin.
I was just checking, double-checked to make sure it wasn't the other councillor, Martin.
No, sorry.
Wonderful. Thank you, Madam Mayor. To echo my colleagues, you know, it, it is disappointing that the government have decided that councils, despite saying how wonderful and how hardworking all councillors and local authorities have been during this past year, are not worthy of any time for principal legislation to be passed in order to enable us to continue to work safely. I have some major concerns about the impact of, of this change on, on democracy going forward, given that there is talk of the possibility of vaccines, vaccination certificates coming in, which would penalise those of us on this council who have not yet had a first dose of the COVID vaccine from potentially being able to attend if they are brought in. That being said, we are where we are. It is what it is. We've got to come up with a solution that is workable and that is achievable. Based on the current roadmap, it would make sense for us to hold our meetings in, in the Alexander Centre temporarily. I think realistically, up until the 21st of June, when that, that is the current date, where, where social distancing is likely to no longer be required by legislation, but may still be desirable from our part. I think we need to take a, a view when we get closer to then, as to whether we continue to hold those meetings outside of the Guild Hall. Because let's be very honest, there is going to be a financial implication to us meeting outside of our own buildings. But it is something that, that if we're going to meet, we're going to have to do for now. I think there's, there's great value in, in maintaining a level of, of virtual meetings for, for the subcommittees. I think they've worked fairly well. And my experience has been that the general public have engaged far more with virtual meetings than they ever did with public meetings, particularly in the other place over in Swale. We get far more people from Favre Shams attend virtually than we ever did drive over or get the train over. Even if you had a big planning application from this side of the borough, it would be very rare that you had more than one or two people from, from the local community attend to, 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 to watch the debate. So there have been many positives to it. And I think in addition to taking the steps required to meet in a COVID-safe manner and continue the business of this council, we should take part and give our representation to the call for representations from the Ministry of Housing, Local Government, sorry, Communities and Local Government, in, in their request for evidence of, of the benefit of, of virtual meetings. Because as councillor Perkin pointed out quite succinctly, they have been of a, of a benefit to, to many people, being able to attend more meetings, being able to actually take part in meetings that they would have missed because either a babysitter's pulled out, or, or your child is sick, or, or in councillor Barker's case, the trains are delayed and you can't get back to, to town if you're working away. They have had massive benefits. And yes, there were, there were big benefits to meeting in person too. And I do miss the, the ability to, to read the body language of somebody that is speaking, to, to be able to actively listen more intently in, in my view, because I find that the screen time can get too much when you're in, in, in long meetings, particularly if you haven't been taking your, your hour, your, your breaks every hour. As I say, I think the, the town clerk's report does give us ways that we can mitigate and, and, and how we can meet in the short term. But perhaps government is moving a bit quicker with local councils as, as a test of what they can achieve when Parliament returns to meeting all in person in late June.
Are there any other comments? Councillor Saunders? Or councillor Hook? Councillor Hook?
Julian was first, I was just waving to go off.
Thank you. Yeah, councillor Saunders.
Yeah, I think I agree with almost everything that people have said so far. And I think it's totally ludicrous. It shows how out of touch really the, the government is, that it's moving forward with this approach. It's interesting that, you know, the Welsh government has taken a totally different approach. I mean, in the, the town clerk's paper, there are three options. I think the middle one kind of emphasises the out-of-touchness of the government, you know, to, to suggest that in order to protect democracy, we devolve all the decisions to an unelected official, rather than carrying on with virtual meetings is, is ridiculous. I, I mean, I'm once tempted to say that we should, for the moment, stick out and carry on with the current virtual regime. But I'm not a legal expert, and I think there could be risks for us in that. So I think the third proposal is probably the one to support. But as, as other people have said, I think at this stage, we should be minimising the risk to the public and ourselves. And although I've got some reservations about committees ceasing to be committees and meeting, you know, formally not being public, I think the, you know, the degree we should be minimising the number of kind of public in-person meetings we have until we're quite a way down the, the road, the roadmap to society really being opened up. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hook?
Thanks, Mayor. I want first of all to thank the clerk for her analysis, because this is a really complicated subject. And I think she's analysed it really rigorously. And that's very much to our benefit. So a big thank you to the town clerk. I, I wanted to ask, I've read that there's a legal challenge being brought by a council in Hertfordshire and some other groups. And I wanted to ask if the clerk happened to know anything about that when it's expected. Because what they're, they're saying is it's a legal challenge about being able to meet virtually. But leaving that to one side for a second, I think we should go ahead with, take the town clerk's recommendations, particularly A and B, that takes us up to the 7th of June, meeting in the Gatefield Hall at the Alexander Centre. And my view is that we should review our committee structure and, and maximise the amounts of virtual meetings that we can have. So that means in fact maximising the working groups, everything that can be classed as a working group, we should do so. Now, I imagine rather than do that now, it's appropriate probably for us to do that on the 17th of May or the 7th of June meeting, for two reasons. First of all, we'll have then three new councillors, and it would be right to hear what they've got to say and to bear their views in mind. And also, in general, quite apart from the virtual versus physical meetings question, we, we do annually review our committees. And so in the last two years, we've made some changes, and we might want to make some changes again this year. And I think that's probably better done in May or June than it is now, when we've got the space to, to do it. My preference is even if legally we can go down to one metre distancing, I think that where possible, we should, we should continue to keep two metres if we can. Because I think certainly based on age, four or five members of the council won't expect to have a vaccine until, until June or even later. And there may be members of the public too. And more contact is obviously, sorry, more distance is obviously safer than, than less distance. Other than that, I'm, I'm happy with the recommendations.
Any other comments? No. I can't see councillor at all. Does councillor Jackson come in? No. I can't see.
I'm here. And yes, I totally agree. I just don't like to say, just for the sake of hearing my voice, I totally agree with what you said.
On this though, do you want to comment?
Well, my comment is that I totally agree with what the other councillors have said. I'm not happy at all about going back to face-to-face meetings, and I much prefer virtual meetings. But aho, if that's what we've got to do, that's what we've got to do.
Thank you. Thank you. So we will go on the town clerk's recommendations.
So, so can I just come in there, Madam Mayor, and just clarify? Now, we have to have our annual meeting. And as I've said, we can't, we have to have it after the elections, not before. So we're legally obliged, we must have that meeting in May. Now, my suggestion only works if assuming that the same mayor and deputy mayor is going to be elected. And I don't know if that's going to be the case. I don't know if you know. But that's just something to bear in mind, that if we go there and we're robed, it will then be difficult if there's a different change to then de-robe and go through that. That, that will be impossible to do that in, in the same way that we've done in the past. So that's just one thing to bear in mind if we go that route. And I've also suggested that we do the honorary freeman. Now, I've spoken to Mike Henderson today. And because he's got family that's not local, he would actually prefer a Saturday. So that, that would actually decrease the numbers. So that, that would actually be fine. I'm sure we can organise, I think, a Saturday in June or July. I've said, I've suggested to him after the 21st. So it's, it's really, if you're happy, the way I've suggested that the meeting on the 17th is actually run.
Councillor Martin? Yeah.
I think from, obviously, we can't preempt what the next council will do, given that there are new members. But I would assume that your meeting proposal is correct. And there's something very dramatic between now and something to make.
I'm happy with that. Councillor Hook, did you want to come in?
Well, should we ditch, should we not, should we not wear the robes this year for that reason, to avoid people coming into contact? I mean, not only might some people have to change clothes, but also usually, you know, people have to help us on, or people help each other. Some people find their robes heavy. Should we not wear robes this year? It's one less thing to touch and make contact with.
Well, everybody's got their own robe. They're all in bags with their names. So it's not usually touched by anybody else. But obviously, that's a decision for the council to make, so.
Again, all hard decisions, aren't they, Billy? As councillor Martin said to me on Saturday, he's worn his medal once this year. You know, there's been so little, it would be really good to go back to having, but it's got to be safe. Councillor Martin.
Can I just ask, because obviously there are three vacancies, if those sets of robes could be taken out and used and actually sanitised appropriately? That'd be my first thought. And my second thought would be that the robes that we all have designated to us, I think, I think we can assume we can all wear those, provided that people can get in and out of them on their own. And hopefully, the public will forgive us if they're not precisely as perhaps they may have done in the past.
They've all been in their bags. I mean, yeah, the time scale is so long since they've been worn. There can't be any contamination on them at all, I think. I just think it might be nice for, for the town to see something happen when it's been over a year since we've had. So the, yeah, councillor Perkin?
I'm happy to propose that we accept the recommendations. I think they seem sensible and that we can judge the situation a little bit further down the line as to what we look at for June and July.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with that. Does anyone else? How, how does anyone else? Any other comments?
Mayor, I'm happy to withdraw the, the point about the robes. I'm sure we can handle them safely. Yeah. I think the blowing of the horn will have to.
Oh, no, definitely not.
This is like bring your own horn.
And sadly, no refreshments either. We, at this rate, we're having no refreshments or anything, are we? So your whole year without any refreshments, not even drink. Have to bring your own water bottles.
Yes.
So we are going ahead then, town clerk? Councillor Thomas has just come in, sorry.
I just, I just wanted to second councillor Perkin's proposal.
Thank you. Can we all vote on that then? We'll try that route. We might get shut down. Yes, I think we're all there with that. Yes, I think we're all there with that. Hopefully not, hopefully not. We should be able to go ahead with something. Thank you. And item 13 now, are we on to? And, oh, okay, I've got that. Councillor Barker, and you can't pass it round now. Response to the local plan, regulation 19, I believe this is the town clerk.
Well, this, this is instead of an extraordinary meeting, but it's highly up to you. I know the deputy clerk is in the meeting, but it is just another means of not having an extra meeting, basically.
Councillor Martin.
Thank you, madam mayor. If the deputy town clerk were to take into account our comments in response to the question from councillor, from Mr Mike Cosgrove at the start of this meeting, I would have no qualms at all about delegating that authority. And perhaps the response could be emailed to councillors with a very simple agree or disagree or any suggested changes at that point.
You're happy with that? Are we all happy with that? Can we vote on that? Yes? Yes?
I, I had, I had already been crafting a, a kind of collation of all of the input areas that we've had from both extraordinary meeting and the swell meeting. I'm happy to kind of work with the deputy town clerk on a response.
Thank you.
That, if that is helpful.
That would be very helpful.
Absolutely. Can we agree on that? I definitely would agree with that. Councillor Perkins, would you agreement with that? And councillor Hook? Thank you. Yes?
Councillor.
Yeah, I, I don't necessarily disagree with the proposal. I'm, I'm just wondering though, if we're going to have a draft and then we're going to view it. If people, if there are things that people disagree with in relation to, to that, how that's going to be, going to be managed. Because obviously potentially this is quite a political issue. So I'd be interested, I'm just starting, I'm not starting a short discussion really, rather than expressing a strong view.
Councillor Barker, if you wish to come in.
Can I, I mean, it's a very good point, councillor Saunders, in whilst I hold pretty strong views on what my response would be to this. As an individual resident, of course, I can make my own response to, to this. I had been considering a way of actually gathering the responses in general. And what do I mean by that? I mean, the conversation tonight potentially has been a fair reflection of of the deltas in, in debate. So whilst we all agree, you know, definitively almost to a man or a person, should I say, the government targets are fairly hideous, we all have slightly different takes on, you know, the actual allocation to the strategic sites that will adjoin Faversham. And as a consequence, I, I had it in mind that we should record most of that variation in our response and to not, because I think it is impossible to allocate a kind of primary voice within it, but to reflect the multiple voices we have had at both, within the council and in public engagement. And I think that would be a reflection of the town council's engagement with the public on that local plan. But I welcome any other particular approach. My feeling is that if, if, if we just tend to go with, this is the town council approach, it, it won't be reflective of A, all of us, and it won't be reflective of our communities either. At least recognizing comments that have come out and been drawn out either amongst us and with the community. We are able to reflect more than a single point of view to, to areas. And whether that be around housing allocation, whether that be around infrastructure, local green spaces, the environment. I was hoping to tease out many of the kind of salient points that have been registered. If anyone else feels that that's an inappropriate way to handle this, then I welcome, welcome input.
Any other comment? Councillor Owen.
Councillor Barker, it sounds quite a sensible approach. And, you know, obviously we were faced with a very, well, I was going to say a very specific question. It was quite a rambling question, but we were presented with a question this evening and around housing allocations. And I think that is probably one of the areas where there may be commonality, but a degree of disagreement. But I don't think we should worry too much about that because I think the vast majority of it, I think we'll find we agree on. You know, the specific detail of what's proposed within, within the local plan. So I think, I think your, your idea is a good one. And I think there'll only be one or two points where there'll be any real difference. But you're right, we should reflect that. I think it would be unfair. Because what, what will happen is if we only put in everything we agree on, it'll be a dull, dull document. So I think it's important that it does reflect the difference of viewpoints. And I think we can, we can articulate that. But I think the majority of the plan is incredibly sensible. And I'm sure the most of us can agree on most of the points in there.
Thank you. Councillor Perkins.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just going to suggest that actually when we've done feedback from the public engagement events, that's, it's captured commonality and difference in the responses for that. So if our document comes back looking similar to, to those, I think that would be quite helpful because it, in, you know, there's been lots of different viewpoints around those public engagements. But the document itself kind of solidifies all of those different angles. So if we could maybe approach it in, in a similar vein, I think that would be quite an effective way of putting forward all of the discussions that have been brought to us by various different members and by the public.
Any other comments?
By my, madam mayor.
Councillor Martin.
I, I agree with the, the way this is being sorted, but I would request that once the draft has been agreed, that it is published on our website as well, just to show the public that we have responded to the consultation and exactly what we have put in as a council.
Thank you. Are we all happy with that? Councillor Saunders, are you happy with that? At the draft, if you have a comment, surely you could go back to councillor Barker and.
Yeah, no, I'm happy with the general approach that people and other councillors have outlined. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So we're in agreement. Do we all need to vote on that? Or are we all happy with that? Councillor Barker.
The only thing I was going to suggest is actually we, April the 30th may seem like a long way away, but it's relatively short. And it would probably be worthwhile if frankly, I took some leave and spent some time with the deputy town clerk to actually work this through and try and produce, you know, reasonably good working drafts by the end of next week. So that we can circulate for comment and thought. If, yeah, I think that would be a good thing to do. But that requires the deputy town clerk to be available and I'm assuming her time where she might not have it, so.
You can find a time, I'm sure, councillor Barker.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, both of you. Yes, that would be great if we pull that together. So I think we could move on to item 14, the refugee solidarity letter. I don't know if you need me to read this out or you've all got a copy, haven't you? And can I ask for any comments? Councillor Saunders.
Okay, well, I think this is a very good letter we've received. I think we should support, support what's proposed and, and right as a town council. I mean, it's focused on unaccompanied children. And it's, if you read the detail of it, it's, it's asking that commitments that have been made in the past are stuck to really, that, you know, the commitments the local authorities have already made are honoured. And the Dobbs Amendment is honoured as well. And I think, you know, the Dobbs Amendment was about really replicating the support that this country gave to children fleeing Germany and other parts of Europe at the beginning of the Second World War. And I think it would be a great shame if we couldn't show the same sense of humanity towards unaccompanied children at this stage. And I mean, I think it's a shame that this whole issue of asylum seekers and refugees has got very weaponized and caught up in a culture war. I think all this letter is proposing is that we, we, you know, we, we operate as decent human beings really and support children who are on their own. You know, at the moment are getting lost and God knows what's happening to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hook.
Thanks, madam mayor. I, I support this. And I just wanted to offer two perspectives on it, which was first during my brief time as an MEP for South East England, this was an issue. So I was on the equivalent, what would be called the Home Affairs Committee in the European Parliament. I was quite involved in this issue and I was really shocked by some of the things I learned. I, in the summer of 2019, I visited Calais and I saw with my own eyes refugees forced to sleep in rubbish tips in woodland, in the most awful conditions, in with children, sometimes as young as two, with their parents and unaccompanied children of not much older in these conditions. And across Europe, there's been in many member states a failure to look after refugees responsibly. We know that that's been in the UK too. The conditions at places like Napier Barracks are absolutely outrageous. And then last year in 2020, at Kent County Council, my other capacity, with this outrageous situation where the head of child services had to officially declare that Kent was no longer able to fulfill its statutory duties to all young people in Kent particularly, well, not particularly, in regards to unaccompanied asylum-seeking children in Kent. It would no longer fulfill its, its basic duties to look after children in need, to keep them in a safe place and so on. And one of the frustrating aspects of that has been refusal by other local authorities in England to receive children who initially arrive into Kent. And secondly, a failure by government to provide resources to Kent to look after children. And I think councillor Saunders hit it squarely on the head. The way that the fate of refugees has been weaponized, used as an issue to divide people and sometimes to suggest to people that problems in their own lives, lack of funding for public services, lack of good wages, lack of good housing, is caused by the presence of refugees, is completely wrong actually. And it's the mark of a civilized society that we do look after people in a situation like that, that any of us could find ourselves in, where there's a breakdown of civilization, whether it's through war or famine or pandemic or civil unrest. When I was in Calais on my trip as an MEP, I was talking to one of the refugees and he was a man from Eritrea, was a high school teacher, spoke five languages. And his reason for having become a refugee was that he'd been involved in editing leaflets a calling for government policies to change. And then someone had dubbed him into the police and he had to get out quick because in Eritrea, that's not the sort of thing you can do. And I thought, goodness me, I edit leaflets, advising government policy. And it's just by good luck that the police are not smashing down my door. And God forbid, there's ever a collapse of freedom of speech and other freedoms in this country. But it could happen anywhere. It's happened in so many countries where it wasn't foreseen. It could happen here too. So there, but for the grace of God, go, go all of us. A few years ago, we had of course, the 100 year anniversaries of the First World War. And in 1914, the first boatloads of refugees began to arrive at Folkestone, refugees from Belgium as the German army came through Belgium, leaving havoc and destruction in its wake. People crammed into boats and arrived on the beach there. And the people of Folkestone, hearing about it, ran to the beach with blankets and soup and bread and took those refugees into their homes. I referred to that once in a speech at Kent County Council and I said, I've got no doubt the people of Folkestone would do it, do the same again. But if I'm really honest, I don't know whether I write about that actually. Because since then, we've had 100 years of propaganda through the tabloid press, making people think that refugees are terrorists, scroungers, spreaders of disease. And these things are not true. And this letter that we're invited to put our names to will not solve the problem. Of course it won't, but it's like the old analogy, I think it was Robert Kennedy who gave it. You throw a stone in a pond and you're standing up for freedom, it sends out ripples, ripples of hope. And eventually enough of those ripples can combine to make a tide and really change things and really change people's views and eventually change government policy. So I would enthusiastically ask us to support this letter.
Absolutely. Thank you. Councillor Perkins, did you want to come in? Thank you.
Yeah. And then after me, I think councillor Jackson has got her hand up too. I just wanted to really kind of point out where the letter has come from because it's part of ongoing relationship that I've had and I know other councillors have had with the the Faversham and Villages Refugee Solidarity Group who are out, you know, all year round raising money and awareness of the plight of refugees and just doing incredible amount of good within our community. They've recently just had a, an online auction which raised over £2,000. They've been out collecting things when we've had the coat collections and tank collections. And I just wanted to make sure that people knew about them really, because they do such an incredible job and they're an amazing bunch of people. And I'm really pleased to try and get the town council to support this letter because I think they're trying to get as much support for it as possible. So that it has a little bit more weight when they submit it to the Home Secretary. So, yeah, I'd, I'd really appreciate everybody supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Jackson.
Yes, thank you, madam mayor. I was actually going to say what councillor Perkins just said. Giving thanks to Val Jeffries bringing this to the attention of us and the Refugee Solidarity Group. We've always been known for a nation that accepted refugees in the town. If you go into our churchyard, you'll see the Flemish who came here. And I don't think there's one of us who can sit here tonight and say that we are only English. I most certainly aren't and I dare say most of you aren't. So, and that was through refugees, most of them coming to this country. So I utterly support this. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're gauging unanimous, unanimous support. Councillor Ben Martin, did you want to come back in?
Thank you, madam mayor. It will make no surprise, I'll keep this brief. It's no surprise that I fully support and endorse the town council signing up to this letter. And I would echo the thanks given to the, by councillor Perkins and councillor Jackson to the Refugee Solidarity Group and councillor Hook's points raised. So as I say, I'll keep it as brief as I can. As has been said, this is not.
As has been said, this is not gonna make a huge impact. I wish it would, but. We have had far too many years of a hostile environment towards refugees and migrants in this country. That have been demonized i- in the press and by some elements of of this political um. Spectrum in this country. Simple fact is that most refugees just want the opportunity to live their life. They want to contribute to their community. And in many cases, they are persecuted for things that we wouldn't give a second thought about.
Yeah.
It's a. This this country contributes to the problem that causes refugee movement. This country is one of the leading manufacturers of arms in this world and exporters. And we export it to regimes that realistically are not going to use them for defence. They're going to use them against their own people to suppress. And to violently deal with anybody who opposes their their regimes. Uh, and we have to remember that as well. Uh, yes, let's sign this letter, but let's not let this be the end of it. Let's continue our working relationship with the Refugee Solidarity Group. Let's continue to. Lobby where we can for those changes to be made that can benefit people's lives. Let's accept the fact that, you know. There are refugees in refugee camps in the UK who were trained surgeons and doctors and nurses. Who were prevented from working in RNHS until their application for asylum is sorted out. When actually we have a manpower shortage and those people could make a difference. Let's change the fact that some of these GPs don't have their qualifications recognized, so they go off when they do. Get their asylum granted and work in the hospital as a porter while they train at night to become a doctor. This has to be a starting point, not an end point.
I think we all agree with that, and we've got to keep hope up. We have to hope that. Differences will happen, things will happen. So are we all, we're obviously, I think unanimously agreed that we support this. Um, and we have to have hope. So I think we're now. Fine to move on and, oh, do we need to vote on that, town clerk? I've lost the plot. Do we need to vote?
If you could just have, yes, please, proposer and seconder. I don't think we have that.
I'll propose. Have we got a second? Thank you, councillor Jackson, and we'll vote on that unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. And we've got receipts and payments to go through. Are there any queries? Um councillor Martin?
Uh, thank you. And just a small comment um on the Excel sheet and on the PDF that's been done for it. Can we change Swallow Borough Council to Swail, please? It's a simple title. A W instead of an E. But other than that, I I would propose that we. Um, pay all these people. I can't see anything on there that is. Particularly contentious, but if anyone's got any questions, please fire them away.
You're heating in. Anyone? Um councillor Thomas.
Uh, I just wanted to second councillor Trevor Martin's proposal.
Thank you. Um, no comments, so could we all vote? To accept that? Thank you. Right. I believe that was the last item this evening. Sorry, it's been a long, long evening for those that were on planning as well. And but we have nearly completed two years and I think you've all done incredibly well. Um, and yeah, two years. There's been a lot to do, and I think all of you, the council staff and councillors, I I tell the community all the time. Just how well. We've, we've done, all of us together, a great team. So, good night, everyone. And see you all, is it May the seventeenth, the next. Time we will be able to come together.
I'll see you Thursday, Alison.
Oh, you will. We've got all day training, haven't we? My sixty-five-year-old brother-in-law said, Alison. Why are you at seventy-two going on a training?